We are now beginning our Place Four Candidates Forum. And our three candidates drew their places. So we have Mr. Hart, we have Mr. Fleckenstein, and we have Mr. Allen. And each one has two minutes for an opening statement. And we will begin with Mr. Hart.
Can y'all hear me? Is this working good? Hello? I have to get down here with it. Talk down here. My name is Jim Hart. I am a curvill native, born and raised here. Graduated from Tybee High School. I have actually gone to Schreiner's during my career. Graduated from the UT San Antonio. I have raised two daughters here in Curville that graduated from Tybee High School. And I had retired financial advisor, retired administrator, manager, vice president of telephone company here in town. Curville Telephone Company. And I was recently retired as a financial advisor. And I think that I need to serve the city soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fleckenstein.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having this forum. My name is John Fleckenstein. I came here, I'm glad that I got the number two again. I was born on the 22nd. This is my second time in Curville. I got here when I was two. My parents have two dogs. No. I'm from Curville. I grew up here. I went to Starky Elementary School, went to what was at the time, Hop Peterson Middle School. And then went to the first Tybee, and then went to the new Tybee High School. And after, whenever I was here, I was also involved with 4H. I was also involved with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I was also involved with the Boy Scouts. Became the first equal scout of the New Millennium in Curville on December 31st, 1999. I went to the University of Texas and got a degree in economics. Lived in Austin for eight years. I was a financial investment manager for one of the largest financial institutions in the nation. I was during, I was working during, with this firm during the merger. And I was actually on the project management team helping with the largest merger of the two of the, or now one of the largest banks in the United States. I currently serve on different boards and around the community. I volunteer my time regularly for a different, for a number of different services for the community. I think nonprofits do a great job of helping out our people. That we need to try to make those as best as we can. Curville's a great city. And I think that it has a great bright future ahead of it. I think that it just, a lot of times, we just kind of need to get out of our way of ourselves and kind of allow the future to kind of progress. I really see great things coming for Curville. And I really love the opportunity to be with the city council to help Curville to continue to be a great and wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Good evening. Once again, I see a lot of familiar faces. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and the lead one voters hosting this event. As I mentioned the last week at a forum, wasn't born here, but I got here as quick as I could in the cloakiness of dark. Or cloak of darkness, whichever you want to call that. Anyway, they haven't been able to run me out of town yet. I guess I got here in darkness, maybe they'll run me out in darkness, who knows? Anyway, my wife and I own a business here in town. A lovely wife of almost 25 years is a counselor at Hop Peterson Middle School. And we have four lovely children that are grown. Two fur babies that keep us busy at home when we are home, which is very subtle in a sense. But I've enjoyed being a representative of the citizens of Curville on council. And I'm seeking another term to represent you and continue to be your voice. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Okay. We are going to begin with questions. What are your top three priorities if you are elected to be the city council? What are your top three priorities? And we start with Mr. Hart. If you stand, please.
We're gonna sit. We have one of us that has a backache.
Oh, okay.
Is that all right with you?
That's fine, that's fine.
My top three priorities are, one, I want to inform the citizens if we had had $27 million worth of debt in the last 10 months. I believe the citizens ought to have a say and have a referendum type vote on spending of this kind. And making decisions on the athletic field, the addition of pond, more openness on the council. I think the council has to be, get along with the county. Library situation needs to be corrected. And lastly, is just to serve. There's priority there to, there's a lot to learn and to do and serve it for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fleckenstein.
Thank you. My top three things for Curville are to focus on is, first of all, is business development. I feel like that I've lived in Curville my whole life, or two-thirds of my life. And ever since I've lived here, there's been a big problem with entertainment. There hasn't been a whole lot of entertainment here. But I think that that's a great opportunity for different businesses to come and be entertainment, whether not that be for food or otherwise, for products and services for our people. I would look at different business codes that allow, that will make it easier for businesses to come here and produce services and goods for our people. I think that the world is ever-changing. The only thing that stays the same is that everything changes. I think that it's time to embrace the realization that the internet is here and it's going to stay here forever. And that there's different services that will come along that are changing the way that we do things in and around the planet. And we can actually do that right here in Curville. But actually, all the city ordinances that we have kind of prohibit us from doing this. So I would just, and the third one would be just new ways of pragmatic thanking for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
I think it's a difficult question to answer as far as priorities go and in ranking them one, two, and three. The continued financial sustainability that we've been able to develop over the past few years is something that I'm very proud of. When I first went on council, reserves were almost nonexistent. And at this point in time, we've got, we've got about $20, $25, $26 million approximately in reserves. Without reserves, any city, any county, any school district are in trouble. That's where we come up with governmental entities one under, closing their doors. I think infrastructure and public safety would be categorized as one priority within itself. We've got to continue to improve the infrastructure as we have been. Water, wastewater in our streets. And we've got to continue our public safety programs that we also have. And again, we, it's hard to place one, two, and three, but we've also got to promote business community and bringing more business about.
Thank you. With this question, we will begin with Mr. Fleckenstein. What responsibilities do you view as unique to city council members? How does this impact the way in which you would serve as a public servant?
Thank you for the question. I think that's a wonderful question. It actually highlights exactly what the difference between a for-profit business and a nonprofit business. Government is not a, government is not a for-profit business. It is not in the business to make money. And citizens are in the business of making money. And so I think that, sorry, did you repeat the question?
Yes. What responsibilities do you view as unique to city council members? And how does this impact the way in which you would serve as a public servant?
And I think as such, as it's a nonprofit, I don't pretend to use the city's money as it's my own money because it's actually the citizens' money. So I think that any time that you're going to spend money, you should bring it to the people for a vote unless it's absolutely necessary. Take, for example, maybe a lift station because we would hate to have sewage coming up through our sinks of bathrooms. But other than that, I think that if we're going to spend people's money, then we should allow them a voice and say what it is that we're going to be doing with.
Mr. Allen.
In my opinion, the responsibility of the city council is certainly to listen to the citizens and respond to the citizens appropriately. I feel that I've been very diligent in listening to those who reach out to me and give me their opinion on an issue and try to respond accordingly. As some folks say, the squeaky wheel typically gets over first. And in my opinion, those that speak loudest definitely have a voice in what's going on. You, and not that those that don't speak loudly, it doesn't. But in the process that we live in today, you know, rules. So I try to listen to each individual, try to come up with proactive action according to what folks have said and poke the dead like done. Also think that we have a responsibility of spending the taxpayer dollars wisely. And again, that goes right back to listening to what the citizens want.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, if you need me to repeat a question, just tell me. What responsibilities do you view as unique to city council members? How does this impact the way in which you would serve as a public servant?
What I say is unique to city council is to work with the city employees and give them goals, not to micromanage, yeah, to micromanage and everyday business. But to give them goals and direction is the primary task of taking care of the infrastructure. The second thing we need to be looking at is listen to the public. What is the public wanting? What do we need to do? Where do we need to put our dollars?
Thank you. Mr. Fleckenstein. Let's see. Now we're going to start with Mr. Allen. Okay? Do you support completing the River Trail West past Harper Road?
Currently, I don't, I don't think that there is a specific plan in place to complete the River Trail past Harper Road. I think currently the plan is to get to one of the parks. If it makes sense and we have the support of the community to do such, I think it's definitely, I think it definitely has merit to take a look at it and see, and see how feasible it is and what the cost is going to be. It's very encouraging to me when you, when you drive by Louis Hayes Park and you see so many individuals there. I know it's hard to believe, but I have been on the River Trail with my wife. And it's amazing how many folks are there. Matter of fact, I think I embarrassed her at one time as I was walking down the trail approaching folks without them knowing who I was and asking, yo, in this break, don't you guys love the Reserve Trail? Did the city do well or what? And I never once got a negative reply. The only negativity I got out of it was my wife kind of sped up and got ahead of me because she didn't want to do that anymore. But I do think the River Trail is a great asset to the city. And yes, I supported it from the beginning and I don't regret that.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, do you support completing the River Trail West past Harper Road?
President, I am not, this is a new question. This is what, I would be willing to look at this. I think that right now we need to concentrate on developing what we have and using it. As far as going west of Harper Road, I really don't see it right now. But it may sometime in the future, something that we can pull out of it.
Okay. Mr. Fleckenstein.
The question was the completion of the River Trail, whether I'm for or against that. I'm glad that you asked this question. I'm glad we get tough questions. This is actually a very tough one because there's lots of people on both sides of the equation. So this is great because there's no walking the line to you get there or you don't. But I am for the River Trail because I think the River Trail is a great aspect, is a great thing for the community. I don't know if I would have gone about the River Trail maybe the same way. I probably would have gone for a public-private partnership where along the community can choose whether or not they want to develop into a project. As well as different members can choose to develop and participate in different developments around the community. Because we know that there's a lot of, I mean, that's one of the great things that Curville has is a lot of retired families that live in and around here and give willingly without, without being forced to give it to so many of our citizens. And I think that if we can do that, if we can accomplish that, get the same thing done without forcing it out of the hands of our people but allowing them to contribute to it. I think that everyone would have a more of a say in the River Trail. So I am for it, but I'm for a different approach.
Thank you. We move now to a new question, and this will begin with Mr. Hart. A community the size of Curville does not have a community center with different types of activities like the CROC does, but with indoor bowling and swimming. Would you support a community center like this for the city of Curville?
I can see where I can support this. If this is something the citizens of Curville wanted, I can support it. But I believe that this would have to be, if we're going to do it on a large scale, I would require that the citizens of Curville have a referendum vote saying, this is what I want. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fleckenstein.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. A community the size of Curville does not have a community center with different types of activities like the CROC does, but with indoor bowling and swimming. Would you support a community center like this for the city of Curville?
Thank you for the question. I think that's another tough question because do you want to provide services to your people and allow them to have a great time? Absolutely. Do you want to force hands out of, force money out of the hands of people into projects that they may or may not benefit from? Then no. So I do think that we have a lot of different recreation in around town that we don't actually know about. So like, there's different pools that we are missing a pool, but we actually, we now have the CROC pool that we didn't have 10 years ago. There's also the Inn of the Hills. There's also the Commission Trace Pool. There's also the River Hill Pool. There's also the Singing Winds Pool. There's, there's lots of pools, right? So maybe we just need to revisit the different places that we don't know about within the city. But I don't think that the city should ever be competing with private enterprise. Private enterprise, I mean, what if, if we have a community center, then what are all the events that happen here at Schreiner and all the events that happen at the Wyler Ranch Hotel and all the other different hotels that are, that are out there competing on private enterprise? And no one has to pay for it, actually get paid to have these enterprises here. So I would be for having more of these different enterprises here. But I would have a third party. I wouldn't have the government owning it because that's another big cost that we're going to have to be stuck with as opposed to letting people make it themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
I'm certainly for community centers. And I think that, that we as a community tend to forget about some of the major assets that we have in Curville. One being the Dieter Center. If you haven't been to the Dieter Center any time in the past few months, years, whatever, it's a jewel within itself. There's a lot of activities going on there for all walks of life. Not just for seniors to go to have activities, but for younger folks to have volunteer opportunities to go and be with the seniors. You do have the CROC Center for activities as well. And as was mentioned, there's many other, many other opportunities around town. I don't, I don't believe that the city should be in the business of owning a bowling alley. That is left for private enterprise. If we want to look at a indoor pool and aquatic center, I'm certainly open to listening to what the citizens want. But that's, that's something that the citizens are having to decide what they want, how they want it, and how we're going to pay for it.
Thank you. This question, we will begin with Mr. Fleckenstein. Please discuss the pros and cons of the new sports complex.
Thank you for the interesting question again. And that's also a very dicey topic because there's lots of people on both sides of the equation on this one. I think obviously the pros are, it's easy to see if you have more parks, if you have more recreation, that's an easy sell for most people. The cons are the different costs. I've seen a lot of different figures thrown out in terms of what the operating cost of what this facility would be. Anywhere from $700,000 to $400,000 a year that, you know, if we have a surplus of $600,000, $60,000 a year, that's two-thirds of our surplus. So what are we going to do for future projects that are coming down the road? So I do, I mean, it's like a Bugatti. We get, we get a great donation. It's a beautiful, amazing car. But can we afford to get an oil change? Can we afford if the engine breaks down to repair it? And I'm not sure how we can cover that revenue, but do, and do we have baseball parks? We have plenty of baseball parks. We have, we have the Little League Baseball Park that we currently use. There's also the Schreiner baseball fields. There's also the ones that are over by, but we have different facilities. And it's, and we're looking at spending millions of dollars on other facilities even though we currently have them, and they're not quite at full capacity yet. So I'm both for and against it on different principles.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Since day one of moving to Curville, I've heard continuously that there's nothing for the kids to do here. You mentioned the movie theater and, you know, you get the oohs and ahs and you get the, oh yeah, right. You mentioned the CROC Center. You get different opinions there. And I think the concept of the sports complex came about in trying to accommodate another venue for the youth to have to be able to give them the opportunity to get outside and out, out from in front of the TV playing video games and watching, watching television that doesn't, that would corrupt their minds. There's been a lot of, a lot of negative talk about the sports complex. There's been a lot of positive talk about the sports complex. The cost related to maintaining, I kind of compare that to rumors. If one person tells another a rumor and the person that just heard it goes and tells two more, those two go and tell two more each, and the next thing you know, you've got a snowball effect. The long-term maintenance of the fields is nowhere near half a million, $600,000, $700,000. Those models have been put together and configured into the future of budgets for the city of Curville and their cover. The debt.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, please discuss the pros and cons of the new sports complex.
Discussing the pros and cons of the new sports complex. I'm very concerned that the citizens of Curville didn't get to vote for this complex. I believe that there should have been a referendum vote, just, even if it was just the question, do we want this complex? And put this to the citizens. But the other side of that is, I believe we're way beyond that now. And we're going to have to get out and support the complex. We've got an investment that we've committed to do there. Even though I may not have personally supported it to start with, but I believe we're at a point now that the city is going to have to get out and support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Allen. What needs to happen to assure that Curville has enough water in 50 years?
I think the current council has taken the first step towards ensuring that water supply is there for 50 years. As was explained earlier by Councilman Stork, I believe, this first phase of the reused ponds is the first step in making that happen. You've got to have the retention ponds before you can move on to the next step to create potable water. Yes, we are going to have the luxury of selling that effluent in the meantime to individuals that want it to water off courses, parks, Schreiner University. Schreiner has said they won't want water. And we, the list just goes on. So in the meantime, we get the, we get the comfort of selling that prior to going to the next step of making it potable. It's very important that we ensure that we've got that mechanism in place with spending.
Mr. Allen, thank you. Now, Mr. Hart, what needs to happen to assure that Curville has enough water in 50 years?
I think that this research is being done and the city's heading in the right direction. I'm looking at the storage ponds. I'm not sure that this is the appropriate time to do it. We have to be looking down the road at what we're going to be doing in 50 years. And something that I look at is, and I really stirred it up with this, is I know Marietta's digging some storage ponds out here south of town. If we ought to offer them, oh, $10,000 when they get through, they will buy, and we'll have our new storage ponds down there. It'd be awesome.
Thank you. Mr. Fleckenstein.
Can you repeat the question just one more time?
What needs to happen to assure that Curville has enough water in 50 years?
Thank you. I think first of all, it needs to continue to rain. Thank you for today's rain. Thank you, Lord. What I think Curville needs to do, well, it's actually interesting if you actually know Curville's history, going back to the early 1800s where Curville was founded. And if you look at the ways that the river has changed from flat rock, that used to be actually much thinner later than it is now, it's much flatter. But I think that we can actually look at maybe even damming some of the other different places that we have in town. And also, also they were looking at not only just using government as the only solution, but looking at, looking at private enterprises, like Jim was saying, to, to allow businesses, if they're going to create water for us, the city doesn't have to spend anything. And they will allow us to use that water. I think that that would be amazing, you know? So if that option is out there, I definitely want to pursue that and look at that because I think that that's going to be, will help us ensure that. We, in Texas, we cater to drought, and I'm not good with that because my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. With this question, we will begin with Mr. Hart. What is the most realistic goal for economic development in Curville? The most realistic goal for economic development in Curville?
Most realistic goal. I'm really for development of private enterprise. The, I don't believe that the Gateway Project has been looked at seriously enough by council. I think that needs to be looked at. Economically, we've, I was born and raised here. I love that Minnie Aircraft is back producing. And I actually worked for Minnie one time. But I also have a bunch of friends that continue to work for them. I went off to college. And Minnie has ups and downs with the economy. And we need to be aware that we need to bring in, as we develop, more economic solutions. They need to be, some of them will help us not be affected as much by the national economy as by what's going on locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fleckenstein.
Thank you. I think that the most realistic goal for economic development, my degree's in economics, so I've studied this very thoroughly for the last, it's called 12 years. I've been studying it not only in Curville and not only in Austin, but in around different states in the United States and different around, different economies in Europe and in Southeast Asia, all over the planet. So I'm really well-versed in this, in this area. So let's keep going. I think small business is obviously the thing that drives it, or just business in general. And the way to do that is to, is to get, to allow more freedom, to kind of reduce a lot of the different codes and ordinances that are allowing buildings from being built. I know that there's a lot of different, say, for example, tiny homes is a new concept that is trending very high among millennials as well as the elderly retirees because they don't want to have a large home. In Curville, based on our city ordinances, based on the square footage of a house, it's illegal to try these new things. And I think that we have to be able to try these new things because that's, that's what humans have been doing since the beginning of time, is always trying new things. And that's how we get further. So I would reduce it, different ordinances and codes to allow different businesses to come here and develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
I think the city hasn't received the recognition that it should have received. And maybe it's overthought, but I promote itself. Fox Tank, Mooney Aircraft, the expansion of Avery out north, the expansion of Avery out at the airport industrial park. James Avery's recent expansion, 350 jobs approximately, was promised to have somewhere around 500. That's a lot of economic development right there. That's a lot of jobs. I think we have to continue to look at each and every opportunity on its own merit and make sure that we don't miss anything. But we also don't want to give away the farm while we're doing it.
Thank you. We'll start, we'll continue on a theme here and start with Mr. Flackenstein. Are you for the Gateway Shopping Center by Gulf Coast commercial question? Are you pro 380 agreements to help bring businesses to Kerrville?
Thank you for the contentious question because there's a lot of people on both sides of this one as well. I think the shopping center is a great opportunity for Kerrville if it's projected in the right way. I think that in a lot of different ways, there's tons of different businesses. I know of very many people in particular that are waiting to invest millions of dollars into the city of Kerrville if they would be allowed to do that. And so on the one end, we're saying, how can we spend money to get people to come here? And then we have, on the other end, we have people knocking on the door with millions of dollars waiting to invest in Kerrville, and we won't let them in. So I'm kind of at a weird impasse on how I feel about sending out money and not letting people that are already knocking on the door into Kerrville. But in terms of being able to, as I understand 3D loans, it's not a direct cost to the city of Kerrville. So it would be much more for that operation. It's much more of a private-public partnership than it is just full-on government control on that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Unfortunately, I think some folks have forgotten that the city council was never given a formal proposal for Gulf Coast Properties. There was a concept law before city council by a former council member that was never brought to a vote. But Gulf Coast Properties itself, there was never a formal proposal to vote on. So I don't think I'm in a position to say one way or the other, whether I'm for it or against it because I haven't seen that formal proposal. 380s are a good thing if they're used correctly. We just approved one for James Avery, the 500-job project that I mentioned just a minute ago. Those are 380 agreement, approved unanimously. The one thing that I will say about any new retail development, I think it needs to be looked at on its own merit based on job swapping within the community.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Question, am I pro Gateway? I think that bringing retail business to Kerrville is a good need. We should encourage it and make the rules easy for new retailers to come to Kerrville. As far as the 380, to be honest, I'm not familiar with all the rules and regulations with it. I wouldn't have a problem with loaning money, two of them is to get started, that they can pay back if that was helping get the infrastructure up and running. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin with Mr. Allen. What are the main issues between city council and county commissioners? And how can they be resolved?
I don't know that any one person can pinpoint a main issue between the city and the county other than probably a lack of communication. I purposely told the county commissioner that I worked with concerning the Fire EMS contract about three years ago that I did not want my name in the paper, taking kudos or getting accolades for making the Fire EMS contract come to fruition between the county and the city. But I think the time has come that I'm going to have to take credit on my part. Myself and Mr. Baldwin sat down on an initial meeting and talked us out and talked about what we could do to make it happen for everyone involved because we certainly didn't want a lack of service being extended to the county residents. We did that. We started that dialogue and we finished that dialogue about six, maybe eight weeks later with a finished product, a good contract that we could all live with.
Thank you. Mr. Hart. What are the main issues between the council and the commissioners? And how can they be resolved?
Well, the main item now, I think, is the library. The discussion about the library is where the people at the county are having to pay a fee to use the library. I was thinking about this the other day and I said, I wonder how much dollars we're talking about for all this riffraff here. The city's budget this year shows $16,000 worth of revenue coming in from letting the people, charging the county people to come in and be able to use the library. $16,000. I believe we could write off, the city could write off $30,000 and let the people from the county come in and use the library. And the city still wanted. There are solutions that are out there that are real easy. $16,000? Wow. Didn't worth the time we were talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flackenstein.
Do you have a question?
Yes. What are the main issues between the council and the commissioners? And how can they be resolved?
I'm not directly aware of the interpersonal relationship or I'm aware of that there's tension between the city council and the county. I'm not aware of what those direct interferences are. I know that there's been argument over different costs and services in around the county. I know different people are on this, that serve on the county commission. One of the things that I think is that I also bring to the table is having been on the board of several nonprofits, you have to work with collaboration. And that's what I think that I work very well in, is listening to all the different sides as well as looking to make a deal and actually getting something done. Because at the end of the day, something has to be done to serve our people. So I would use professionalism and I would try to get a deal done as soon as possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's begin with Mr. Hart. No, Mr. Allen, you get, where are we? Mr. Hart?
Mr. Hart.
If locating workforce housing, where should it be located? And how should it be funded?
I guess the first thing I have to say is I don't want to see the city getting into the housing business. It's not something the city could do. I think we could encourage private business to do this. We could use the properties that, different properties that are owned in the city to do this. Maybe some method there. But I really can't see that I'd help support the city getting into the housing business. Concerned with property out near the airport is the transportation. We create another problem by building it out there. We, primary jobs wouldn't just be manufacturing jobs, there would be other jobs at town. So we would be creating a transportation problem too. So I would be real concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flackenstein.
Do you have a question, sorry?
If locating workforce housing, where should it be located? And how should it be funded?
Thank you for the question. I've done a rigorous analysis of housing projects in around the nation for getting back several decades, whether that's New York City or Detroit or Chicago. They don't work out really well. Those communities tend to dwindle and not do very well. So I'm always for private enterprise. I think that where we should build a house is where someone wants to build a house. Once they've bought the land, then they should be able to build that house. And I think that if we looked at, if we reviewed some of the different codes and ordinances that are keeping us from building, and like I was saying, like tiny homes. Tiny homes is where you can actually build a house. It's like $50,000 or $60,000, and that's affordable. And it doesn't have to be, you know, it can actually be nice. But currently, as the laws exist in Kerrville, that's not legal. So I think that we need to review these different legal structures, keeping out these different enterprises that will change the way that the future works, whether that is Uber and Lyft giving people a ride in around town or Instacart delivering groceries to people's homes or just any number of services. I think that it's always best in the public enterprise hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
I do believe that workforce housing is something that we need to continue to study. I've said this in a recent forum. I think there's a misconception out there that the city is in the process of making this happen. The city is in the process of discovery. We're trying to determine if that is something that is feasible, if it's something that we need to look forward with and try to come up with some type of a partnership with private enterprise. My wife and I once had several rental properties who were in that realm of business. I can guarantee you, I would never do it again. And I certainly don't think the city needs to be in that business. The city has no business being landlords. As far as location goes, the property on Peterson Farm Road is certainly not carved in stone. I think there's options out there that we need to look at. I'm not in favor of taking public parkland and turning it into a development for private enterprise.
Thank you. This question, we begin with Mr. Flackenstein. How do you view the current city budget? What needs to be changed in the budget?
Thank you for this question. One of the things, I guess, I don't know if I said it before, but I'm a financial advisor, so this is what I do on an ongoing basis. And whenever I was, we made the Time Council, Storky, I was entering first grade. So my name is John Eric Flackenstein. My favorite color is navy blue whenever I grow up. I'm a stockbroker today. I'm a stockbroker. Took a long time to get there, but I'm here today. So I'm excited to review the city finances in ways that I think will be very rigorous because we do investments, so we have to put our clients' investments first, our clients' interests first. We're always looking for how we can spend or invest our clients' money wisely and it be for the benefit of them. So I think that if we're going to do that in Kerrville, if we're going to invest in a project, I'm going to make sure that those dollars actually equal dollars for the Kerrville citizens. So I'm into getting a positive return on investment, a return on capital. So I think if we're going to be able to spend money, we need to do it wisely. So I think a rigorous review of the budget and what we're using, those funds are, what we're going to use them in the future for is highly needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen. How do you view the current city budget? What needs to be changed in the budget?
I view the city budget as a very well-crafted document. City staff has done an excellent job over the past few years of putting this budget together in the direction of council. When I first went on council, we went through a very, very tough time cutting close to 30 jobs within our municipal government. That's never fun, whether it's municipality or whether it's private business. That's never a fun thing to do. I've been in both. I think that we have to continue to evaluate each and every year and look at the tax dollars or what we're spending, where we're spending it. But I think we're lean. I think we're spending money wisely. And this one gentleman asked me recently, he said, if I ask you to cut the budget, where would you cut? And I said, well, I would answer that with a question. Where do you want me to cut? A look-safety cut? Would you want the water wastewater cut? You tell me.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
City budget is, I looked at it, I have a call through it. It's something that if you get on the council, you would need to become quite familiar with it. It has to be studied. The one thing I would cut, I would cut the $16,000 of revenue from the county people. I mentioned earlier with the library. As far as the budget though, I know of no problems. I think it needs, this is something council would continuously review. They would require me to study it. I have two licensed financial advisor, financial background, and I do not understand negative numbers. I only think positive numbers, looking at budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, we'll have you lead off with answering this question. What would you do to better facilitate growth amongst Kerrville and the surrounding cities?
I think that question's tied to an earlier question, basically, as far as economic development and so forth. And I'm going to stand by that. The answer is carefully look at each and every proposal that's laid before us, evaluate it from top to bottom, inside and out, make sure it's a good proposal that we can go forward with and feel good about in order to continue growth. If we have steady growth instead of spurts of growth, that's a smarter way of growing. And I think that we've done a good job of attempting to make that happen. And we continue to keep our efforts going in that direction.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
What would I do to looking at growth in Kerrville and surrounding areas? I look at the growth numbers in the state of Texas, grew 10 years previous to 2014 at a, I think somewhere around 18%. I think all the guests contributed a lot to that. Kerrville was considerably less than that number. And I'm not, I'm thinking that this is not a bad thing. I think we need growth, that we can stay, our infrastructures stay up with their growth, and that we professionally look at it. We would have to review, I'm all for relaxing some of the codes. We possibly review codes to see if they encourage, like Mr. Flackenstein said, maybe we do need total out for smaller houses to be built in Kerrville. And then they hear it. I agree.
Do you repeat the question one more time, sorry? Facilitate growth in Kerrville and surrounding cities, right?
What would you do to better facilitate growth amongst Kerrville and the surrounding cities?
Thank you. I wish I had, I'm going to try to speak very quickly and hopefully not too fast, but I wish I had an hour to talk about this because I think I could talk for days about this. Facilitate growth in Kerrville, I think first starts with the opportunity to open up a business and operate a business, and that starts with the codes and regulations of the city. There's a bunch of new trends that are happening. There's also, we have, it's called Austin Sprawl, San Antonio Sprawl. So you're having a lot of different people that live in these cities. As these continue to grow and have too much traffic, they will continue to move here. In the next 20, 30 years, Kerrville will look a lot different. We have a huge banking committee here. In 20 or 30 years, I think Kerrville will be a great financial hub of the Hill Country. Because of all the retired people that we have here, we also have a great and growing financial, or, I'm sorry, medical centers. So over there behind the current shopping center, there's a medical district that's developing, right? So, and we didn't even plan it, it just happened. And it's an amazing thing. So I would continue to do what I've been doing and facilitate with the Hill Country young professionals as well as with the Chamber, as well as with different nonprofits to get people involved and integrated within the city. And then we have to do a better job of promoting our city because this is a beautiful place and people will, people do want to come here, people are coming here. We just have to make this a place that people want to stay and live. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be our last question. And let me say that all of you can meet and greet the candidates in the lobby after the forum. And this, we begin with Mr. Hart. As Shriner University continues to grow, it brings in new faces, increased spending, and a large number of community service hours. How would you facilitate better growth between the city of Kerrville, Shriner University, and the young adults of Kerrville?
I've been associated with Shriner Institute all my life, back when Dr. Aitken was here. So I have a long history.
So I have a long history with Shriners. I believe what we could do, and it's something I've noticed that Shriners has like the Craig series of learning, get the work out. There's a lot going on out here at Shriners that we could take and do and share in where older people, the retired people, could take classes out here. It's, it's really enlightening to go sit down in a class. It's really a brave thing to do. I remember one time I took a class called Critical Thinking. Wow. Those kids were way ahead of me. But I, I think that more involvement and let's support Shriners. I love Shriners, it's part of my heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fletchstein?
Thank you. I think this is a great question. Shriners University is a very important economic part of Kerrville. We need to realize that this, you know, that 99% of the city is not retired. It's actually, there's 1,700 students that attend the University of, of Shriners University as I understand it right now. And if you have all the elementaries and all of the, the high schools and middle schools as well, we actually have several thousand people in the city that are, that are below 20. So one thing that I would focus on is entertainment because everyone comes here and the biggest thing that, the biggest headache for anyone that's millennial coming into Kerrville is what do we have for entertainment? There's not a lot that we can offer besides the parks, besides parks and the various businesses that are coming. There are new businesses that are coming, there's ones that recently opened up within the past couple of months, people are raving about, but they had to fight tooth and nail to get here. And that's one of the reasons that I'm here, is to make it easier for these businesses, whether that be restaurants, entertainment, or activities, to come here for these students so that they continue to stay here in Kerrville. Kerrville's a wonderful place and I think that Shriners makes it an awesome place. I actually live right down the road, so thanks for being very neighbor.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Since moving to Kerrville, I've had the great opportunity to watch Shriners continue to grow as it has. Shriners is a great university. Shriners is not Texas Tech, go Raiders. It's not UT. It's not A&amp;M. It's, it's a unique university within itself. You've got a whole different population coming to Shriners that would go to, to a public institution. New faces, more spending, more services needed, absolutely. I think the city has a responsibility of working with the local businesses to make sure that they understand the need of those expanded services, whether it be expanded hours or whatever. I think, I think the city also has a responsibility of working hand-in-hand with Shriners to make sure that the students understand the many different opportunities for volunteerism, helping in the community in so many different ways. I think there's a lot of work there that can be done.
Thank you. And now we have the candidates' one-minute closing statement, beginning with Mr. Hart.
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. And I want to encourage everybody here, go find, go vote. What we do not have in Kerrville is we don't, what are we going to have normally, I think, maybe 1,500 in this election? It's not near what we need. We need to get your neighbors out. Yes, I'll switch to vote for me, but really what we need is the public getting out there and voting more. Get, get your neighbors out, get your friends, get up and vote. Thank you.
Mr. Fletchstein?
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know everyone had to fight the swamps and the trenches to get here, so thank you for being here. And thank you, everybody, for hosting this. I think this would be a great opportunity for, for Kerrville. Kerrville, the future will happen. You can't stop the future from happening. You can't stop the sun from rising, but you can prepare for it. So I think that that's what, what Kerrville should do, is kind of be open to these new ideas, these new things that will perpetuate and continue to change the world, whether not that's Uber driving cars, whether or not that's super high-speed internet, whether or not that's drones, or tiny homes, or trailer, trailer park food. You know, there's tons of different things that we can do here and it's just Kerrville's a place that's waiting to happen. And so, and everyone knows that it can happen. And so I'm, I'm really excited to kind of pop the lid, once you probably can't stop for Kerrville and really get things happening for providing the services and the products for, for our citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Some 15-plus years ago, my wife and I moved to Kerrville because it was a great city. We had an opportunity to, to purchase a business and we looked at the community as a whole and decided that it was, it was definitely an opportunity that we felt was warranted to make and basically because of the great city that it was in. I've been extremely fortunate to have had the privilege of having the voters to elect me into office, to be a, be a part of this wonderful opportunity of watching Kerrville change through the years. It's, it's been a phenomenal opportunity. I greatly appreciate it. As, as the other two candidates said, may the Senate, it doesn't matter who you vote for, vote. There's no room for apathy in, in any election, not just this one, any election. We all have a responsibility as citizens to exercise our right to vote because there's countries that they don't have that right. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Let's thank our candidates. And we thank you for being here, for writing your excellent questions. We thank the Shriners University Student Government Association and our league members because we're all working to have an informed electorate and make democracy work. Early voting begins Monday, the 25th, through May 3rd. As you know, Election Day is May 7. Our league membership is open to any woman or man. If you would like to join the league, see the woman in the red hat there. We prorate our dues, so for April, individual dues are $45, for two in a household, $64, and the student rate is $22.50. Our League of Women Voters only fundraiser is Belk Charity Days, Belk Charity Days, which this year is Saturday, April 30th, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Belk gives great discounts, it's a wonderful way they support our community. Tickets are for sale, they are $5. The league gets the $5. You get $5 off of your first purchase. You can go into Belk the week before and pre-select and put away your items. Then you go in that Saturday morning between 6:00 and 10:00 and get, and pick them up and pay for them. Remember graduations, remember Mother's Day, they're coming, and we thank you for supporting your local league. Please meet the candidates in the lobby. Thank you.[1795.32][1795.32]